Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for making time in your schedules to be here today, either remotely or in person. I don't know why I thought it was a remote meeting, so I apologize that I'm not there in person. First, kudos to Jesse for all the work to do the first draft, especially not having ever sat through this before, so kudos to him. What I want to ask of the group is, you know, we need to figure out which draft. Jesse sent out one, I did a lot of education to that, but I said to everyone, just want to know which one we want to go, what we want to use as our starting block for discussion today.
As the author of the first draft, I would recommend that we start with the second draft. Sit down, sit in front of everybody in person.
No, let it slide then. Yes, and I think I probably know the draft. So what I did was, a couple of years ago, Joe, you probably remember this.
Only too well.
Yes, only too well. Where we ended up having to go through this document four times before we got one that would be accepted. And we never got the feedback as to what wasn't right. It was just like, needs more, you know, reviewing, basically. So I think we did it two times with the committee, and then the third time, I think Joe and Mary, who was the chair at the time, and myself did a draft of it, and that seemed to be accepted. So then I, I mean, it could have been four times. And then we took it to committee for final review. So what I did is I kind of took the format of that one, but I want to walk you through one key correction, regardless of which one we were using. And I'm assuming that's what you have left, Jesse?
Yes, your draft is up.
So I understand. On what is, well, I thought I had it more. What is, right at the bottom, in the artist access, where it says, "Darn, I should approve 948 fund multi-tolik application." Well, where do we get it? There, going down past developing arts.
Oh, sorry.
I'm looking into the one where it says "pass unanimously," and I'm not finding it right now. I have one eye that's not working with me. But I thought we did one that had... Anyway, I was an extension. I need to make sure that I'm an extension on anything related to online funding. I think we got it once, I'm not sure we got it twice.
I will double-check that and make sure that it's accurate.
All right. And then...
It does say, I'm sorry. Right above developing, the words "developing arts," it does say, "Motion passed with chairperson hopes abstaining."
Okay, that's the one I want to make sure that...
Right here, in the middle of the screen.
Okay, I got that one. I thought we did one whole thing. That's fine, as long as I'm in there as extending, I'm good to go.
Okay.
And then, does anybody have any comments or changes or things they just hated about my application? Because I, because I really, I just want to get it back through the submission process.
I don't really think that you hate that, but I do have an additional thing, having written lots of agenda reports for the city. When we talk about actions of the committee, I think every time it says somebody motioned something, that should be somebody moved something.
Okay. Do I have the tender bid?
There are several motions on the first few pages, if you just...
Okay.
I'll get that changed.
I have a background question. Beth, when you said that you're the speaker of my service, that you had, and I apologize, I'm in a hotel in Chicago. People are back...
Thank you for joining us.
I have, I have no control over the vacuum in the background, sorry. My question is, when you said you had trouble, like, getting this approved, who were you submitting it to and asking for? Like, and who, who came back to you with, like, this, this needs to be better, and that a lot of clarification? Is that the city council or the staff? Who was that?
I am assuming that it was Cindy, Steph, Joe. I'm going to add Phil to you about your assumption as well.
I'm thinking it was the city manager, yes.
I think so, too.
Okay. That's very helpful to me, not, not having had that background, just to, you know, understand.
Yeah, because who, who had typed it up and had taken the notes and everything and been for it yet? And we, as a group, thought we were done and got called back to redo it a couple of times. It was great fun, let me tell you.
I will say that Jesse and I had shared this early iteration with the manager's office already, and just for clarification, and he requested an update. And there were no big red flags or anything that came out of that correspondence. And I recall Jesse correct me if I'm wrong. So he's well aware of where the committee sits right now.
I, I will say that the, the only thing that I would stake in regards to that is when the city manager did have a question about year-to-year scoring, I input a lot of extra data in that email that was not currently in this draft, such as things that have been in past drafts, like the application score compared to average. And then just general, general data like that that I didn't think in my draft was entirely relevant, but can absolutely get put back in.
Well, I think in looking at prior reports that went to city council, that was included in the city council report, but never in our report.
Okay.
So there was another report, and then this was kind of the detail. This is, as I understand it, this is the piece that the council members and city, city managers, city assistant managers, et cetera rely on when they sort any complaints about what we've done as for the reasoning behind, the reasoning behind it. So we've often had the feedback to us that we need to be based on what the, in our, in our write-up, it needs to be based on the application. That's kind of the consensus, I think. Joe and Mary and I came to after poring on it so many times.
So Jesse, their thoughts on score to average? What feedback did you get on that?
None.
None, okay.
It was the first time I directly emailed the city manager, and I was like, "I'm going to throw every single thing I have to make sure this is accepted." They were just like, "This is helpful, thank you." And I was like, "Cool, done."
So if there's nothing on that, Jesse, I'd like to go to my page five, from which symphony, or is it highlighted?
Just to help. Sorry, everybody. Just to help everybody, these are in order, large, medium, small, and then by score.
Right. So this could be under the large A, and it would be toward the top.
Sorry.
So it would be the symphony?
Yeah.
There you go. So the first one, as I went back to try and take some information when, when I did the original note, it was something along the lines of, you know, they didn't show correlation, or you didn't have that, or something like that. So I went back to see what they put in their application. And they do reference Chery Mavida, and T.O.G.R., and Patreon Manager, and GeoFencing, and all that good stuff. I think they kind of did that. What they didn't do is they didn't do it all underneath the benchmarks, just kind of scavened throughout. But I, I think they did that. I'm happy to leave that comment in there if you all, I just wanted to bring that up. And then in the next three bullets that are highlighted, well, two, two and a half bullets that are highlighted, I just didn't have those comments in my notes. Not saying they're right or wrong, I just didn't have anything like that in the notes. So I wanted to bring this up as well. And just out of curiosity, what do we mean by expanded services in the second one?
I believe as we were talking about their innovative performances, how they went to the partnership performances in Botanica, and then the other activities they loosely referenced in the interview session, like the theater in the round format.
I will say, anything on my draft was said out loud. I didn't add anything, and I tried not to put words into the committee's mouths. So if no one elaborated, I didn't try to elaborate for them, besides...
And I think that's good.
Just besides, you know, trying to make the point clear.
So let's take the first one. Do we want to leave it as is? Delete it? Add to it, that's the one where it talks about Chery Mavida, and T.O.G.R., et cetera?
I'm trying to remember what we're referring to there.
I think this was added by Ben.
Was it?
Yeah, it was added. So the original one was, let me see if I can find it. "The application does not speak to how the symphony engages their audience to create a product that will resonate with their audience." Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's an answer. "The symphony did not record how they were or were not meeting their performance benchmark."
Yeah, I wonder, let me have a look. I think how you have that works.
Yeah.
In our discussion, we did talk about how they had different sources in there. But we were, I feel bad for Jesse and staff because we do jump around a lot in our deliberations.
I listened to the whole reading again.
Oh, my gosh.
Lucky you.
You should get overtime.
So do we, okay, so we'll leave that one. The next one is on the expanded services, link that in.
Do you feel we need to expand upon that from your experiences working with city?
Well, I'm, I'm guess, I'm guessing that Lindsay will get any questions that are related to that, if she's comfortable with being able to articulate what expanded services are. Otherwise, we could, you know, indicate, I think it was you, Dominic. I'm trying to tell who's talking that indicated some of those innovating performances in the round, et cetera.
Is service, this is Joe. Is services the correct word to use there? Or should we use performances or programming? Or would that be better, would that better reflect what we're trying to say?
Yeah. I think that's a good change.
Do we need to be even clearer by saying something like the expanded programming types, or the type, expanded types of programming? Or is expanded programming enough?
I like the types of programming, as you suggested, but others may not, so...
I'm always happy to get that word counted.
I agree with types of programming.
I think, I think it's clearer.
Okay.
The next one, "The organization has made several adaptations due to the aging of their audience members." I think they made several adaptations. Maybe we combine it with the one about, "Due to pandemic and aging of your audience members."
Yeah, that works for me, I like that.
Sure.
My only other question to Dominic was the, do we need to expand upon the youth programming, since that is a large portion of our questions that we ask in the application? We just give an example there? And I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Well, they do the, they're the ones, this and the, they do the youth symphony orchestra, right?
Yes.
And I, if I recall, like, that, I know that was compelling to me, just as an example.
This is Cindy. I wonder, instead of giving specifics, we could just say that we praise the symphony's record of youth programming, which is really just bringing attention to the answer to that question.
I like that.
Oh, I like that.
Okay, next one.
I have a comment on the next bullet point. It's not highlighted, but the highlighted area, "We commend them for all the adaptations and expanded services." And then we turn around and say, "We don't know how they engage their audience to create a product that will resonate." I'm not, what are we asking for there after we've just praised them?
I think that is more in reference to even they admitted that they don't know how to reach a new audience, that younger audience. Because in the Q and A portion, they did bring that and address that aspect to it. Their experimentation through some of the programming in, through COVID, but even they, in the Q and A session, were very upfront about the aging of their audience and trying to make classical music engaging to a new audience. So maybe you're right, maybe we need to find a better way of phrasing that. Like, the application does not speak to how the symphony is engaging a new audience.
Or a younger audience.
Or a younger audience, you know. This was addressed during the Q and A session. This concern was brought up by the applicant or which symphony orchestra during the Q and A session.
So basically, I want to know what they're, how the symphonies are attempting to engage the new audience?
Yeah, younger, a younger, more, I don't want to use the word diverse, because we have different ways of saying it, but a, a new audience or younger audience, non-traditional audience.
Ooh, I like the non-traditional. Good catch, Jerry, good, good ass, Dom. Anything else before we move on? Okay, the next one. I think it's music theater, music theater.
Yep.
So the first one, I just didn't have, I didn't have any, and maybe I slept during that. I didn't remember any conversation about online fundraising.
This has to do with their creating of intimate perform, intimate opportunities for donors during the pandemic, where they did kind of like virtual programming.
Okay.
And that was, that was an attempt to keep donors engaged, right? So I think that's where that comes from. And then not necessarily planning to do, like, broadening, broadening or continuing that. I think that's where that, I think that's where that comes from.
Okay. And then the next one. I was suggesting the green instead of the yellow, right about it?
Can you say what that is? It's black and white on our paper.
I'm sorry. So the one that I want to replace is, "The organization has applauded the steps it is taking related to diversity in program productions, as opposed to the organization's transparency about the diversity of the ball.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. That was added because we were worried that it was simply wrong in saying, "I'm hiring my friends."
Yeah, and, and I think right now, we can, at least they're making an effort. That was more me, just type. And I think it goes back to the larger discussion of we wish the application had more purpose, even the Q and A session.
Yep.
And then the next bullet, I just don't recall. Maybe we did. Like, I, you know, it gets to be a long day when we're doing this. So I felt like maybe I took a mental trip to the beach, but I didn't remember us talking about the strategic plan.
I don't call it either.
I, I will say, it might have been a throwaway line, but again, if it was said, I wrote it down.
And I was wondering, it was part of that larger discussion we were having towards the end, just about the lack of purpose in anything, either the Q and A or the written part. It's all good answers, but just the below the base level, what they were saying. That's what I'm assuming that was part of. But again, we are all over the place, so...
So take it out?
I think we can take it out if, if the committee doesn't feel that it strongly represents, like, a consensus point. Like, if we don't feel like that needs to be in here. Whether or not it says something well clear or something else, right? So...
Okay, and then the next one?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it for now, because it sounds like...
I'm sorry.
Nobody's fighting for its conclusion. So I'm gonna cut it. Done.
Those are the easy ones, right?
Yeah.
It is unclear whether the organization will continue on that one. You know, it implies, I always say, when we get to trying to manage an organization, what if it's not cost-effective, or it's not producing the results that they want? Would this make them feel like they're forced to do that?
Yeah.
I, I think the other concern I have, Beth, is that no place in the application did we create an expectation that they would continue unless this was one? So I think that's outside our scope.
I'd recommend deleting unless somebody has hard-earned over that.
I, I believe this came about because the, the videos that they started making from COVID are now moving more toward a very focused audience of donors, rather than to a general online sort of reach. I just want to point, I, I'm not fighting for it. I just want to point and further clarify where this might have come from.
Yeah, I feel like, I think that's true, and I don't have any concern for this coming out.
There may be an opportunity to link that, that second sentence that was highlighted with the second bullet point that you have with online fundraising and overall honesty about sustainability, because those are kind of linked lots. If you would like to expand on that idea, or if you would like to amend completely?
I feel like, so, and I may be mixing up two organizations here, but I feel like they have mentioned that them starting the online was solving, starting everything they were doing online was solving a problem. And now they're still seeing that problem, but then they just threw away the online portion. And if that was solving the problem, then why were we throwing it away? And that wasn't clarified. And again, I don't know if that's within our scope to say, well, hey, you were solving the issue with this, why are you abandoning it? I, I'm not sure on that, but I think that's why that ended up coming up.
Well, maybe we read that second portion, which may be beyond our scope. We combined that second line with, after we praised them, and we're unclear if the organization will continue these online videos. Because we, I think the overall, and I can easily say it was sustainability, never mind. I think we can kill it.
Yeah. I believe they were unclear if they were going to continue in their online portfolio. As they're now back in-person season, they're still being flexible and still working through the limitations of what performances look like in the pandemic. So I think that they were unclear, and they were, they communicated.
It's dead.
I like your style, Jesse.
Take a red pen, I will take a red pen today.
Beth, before you move away from music theater, the last bullet point at the end of the last sentence, the impact the organization has on the communities? Do we want that plural or community?
Whatever you want, Jerry.
I de-plural it. It's singular. Looks like Mark Arts might be the next one?
Yeah. So my question on the first bullet is, I'm not sure why we put that in there because we allowed other people to compare the 21 and 20 data and didn't, didn't date it. So I just want to make sure we're fair as we look at all of that. Either that or we need to go back and say that to everyone.
Right.
I think the intent, this is Cindy again. I think the intent was, they talked about this overwhelming increase, but the attendance numbers didn't seem consistent with that. So I would be more comfortable if it, instead of being compelling or valid, something about the inconsistency of the attendance numbers with the narrative and the comments.
Okay.
Attendance numbers from FY20 to FY21 were inconsistent?
Inconsistent with the narrative and comments made during Q and A.
Okay.
How'd you fast?
Gotta be. You guys talk a lot fast.
And then, yeah, I understand, and maybe Anthony, and I'm so glad you're there. I didn't realize you, oh, yeah. I'm so glad you're there because I, I have a question again, because I do think there is a doorway for local artists. Maybe not diverse artists, but I do think they provide a doorway for local artists in that, you know, a lot of their exhibits are local artists, all their teachers are local artists. If it's a diversity issue, I think we should address the diversity. But I do think they are open to look, to local artists.
Yeah, I think they definitely provide a doorway for local artists. And we've seen that, and I think they may have mentioned some of that in the programming. As far as growing their careers, that's a whole nother thing. But my big issue, even with what I've seen there, is that they, it's diversity. Like you said, they tend to kind of hang their hat on diversity, but what they're providing is not really diversity, so...
So would the third bullet about address that or not? Let me see. Where the committee applies the organization for the establishment and new strategic goal, and we look forward to hearing about progress made?
I kind of second Anthony on that. In my, I wonder if there's a way we could word it where, this is Dominic, by the way, that their, the inconsistency in their narrative on the focus on diversity to what is either seen or felt by the community at large, that there's a disconnect in some way. Do you, I'm trying to, was that kind of fair? We've got a fair amount of work, because I think, and it may be, not trying to support them, but playing devil's advocate, a lot of organizations may feel they're being diverse, but there's a disconnect between the artists they are trying to provide access to and the actual organization.
Well, they were the one who were very proud of the task force, right? And we were discussing how they, they didn't articulate any changes that had come about, despite having this big fancy task force, so...
They specifically said they hadn't done anything.
Yeah, right.
So we've had the task force for a while, but we've not done anything. So it, and that's where, if it's, if there's some way to articulate, yeah, you all are saying that you have diversity, it's more dangerous to say that you have it and not really have it than to just leave it alone.
Yep.
So I added to the third bullet point, I currently added a, I added a sentence that says, "Currently, there is a disconnect between what Art Arts represents in its application narrative to what is felt or observed by the community."
By, you want to say by diverse artists? Or what do you think would be the right term, instead of saying the community?
I think it definitely needs to have something diverse in it.
A disconnect between local artists of, local diverse or local, do we just basically artists?
Anthony? Anthony, can you give me an example of what you would like to see?
Well, one big example would be diversity in staff.
Okay.
Diversity in their board.
That's where I put in, because that's what I thought you were talking about, that you wanted to stand their programming, and their governance, and their administration. And that's why I used administration, because that would be staff. Because I think they would come, I think they might come back and argue our comment. And that's why I'm saying, you know, so as long as we can say, well, you're staff and diverse, you're, because I just went to their abstract art thing, and that had quite a bit of diversity in, you know, the judging, in the submissions. So I, I just want to make sure... So I just wanna make sure that, you know, works clear as to what we want from them.
Yeah, and their governing body and staff will be the primary areas because that's what kind of helps determine the rest of it.
See, I think my, is the flow language we have.
The underwork's gotta be a Hendrix for anyone, I would think.
What if we said the committee looks forward to hearing about the progress made in diversifying programming, governance and administration?
Ooh, I like that.
Yeah, that's good.
Well done, I think.
Thank you. Work here is done.
You're not off any.
Okay.
Okay, so then we can take off the last bullet. Oh, go ahead. You keep going.
I was just, I was just saying made it diversify the organization's program and governance administration. I was just clarifying.
So now you can un-highlight this, the first bullet and delete the second.
Yep, that'll get done.
Okay, Orpheum. So everything I, and I didn't have in my notes, again, that means absolutely nothing, others that I didn't have in my notes. So I wanted to make sure, but I, on the second from the last bullet, there was no connection between educational opportunities and their economic impact. Have we ever had a relationship between educational opportunities and their economic impact? Have we oversigled that up? I'm not aware that we have in the past, if I'm asking.
I don't believe so.
Not during my time.
How about we delete that one?
Goodbye.
And somebody help me, I'm okay with indicating that recorded rental revenue is not consistent and not consistent with what?
I think it might have been across the application, I'm not certain though.
So what's in the narrative versus, so narrative and numbers, so I kind of like what we put M4, Mark Arts, the narrative and the numbers, too?
Yeah, that needs more explanation.
I can, I can go through and listen again and see if there was expansion on that point, but I'm looking.
Beth, this is Jerry, a couple of grammatical things, that first sentence commended for its ability to, it should be to maximize instead of maximized. And then in the next one, I believe collaborations are strong, instead of but, it should be and they proved to be a good community partner rather than but.
So maybe, I don't know, on the overall increase, maybe we say something along, I'm not looking at the application. So I'm assuming that's a valid statement, but the overall increase in, maybe the committee recognizes the overall increase compared to non-paid attendance as a positive trend? Or trending positively?
Please.
And the next one, is that two things, is that two comments and there was not enough explanation for funding? And the strategic plan did not have enough detail?
Yes, it is two comments. The Orpheum started to get very negative very quickly, so since this one was, they were both talking about not enough detail, I kind of lumped them together.
What if we said something then that the application could be strengthened by expanding on funding need, strategic plan and innovation?
That's good, because I was gonna ask about the evasiveness, it sounds a bit accusatory.
Can you say that again, Beth? I'm sorry.
And, and innovation, and then you got it.
Okay.
Except we need to put another verb in there.
Yeah, I'll get there. By, by including more detail to funding need, the strategic plan and innovation.
Yep.
Yep. And I'll double check that across.
And if, you know, you could maybe even do somehow incorporate the rental revenue or encourage the agency to do a second read or something as the information provided in the narrative did not agree with information provided on the forms.
Okay, I'll double check that that's indeed what the issue is.
Yeah, check to make sure that that's a valid statement, though.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, arts partners. Although I mean, I disagree with the highlighted statement, nowhere, you know, this is not need based, that's 100% opinion. I just think we ought to delete it. I'm not saying that they aren't.
I agree.
I just don't think it fits with the reason for funding.
Well, yeah, if we're gonna leave that, we need to add it to several other organizations.
Will they all think they're a necessity or they wouldn't resist it?
Well, I agree, Joe. And they should.
Right.
Anything else on arts partners? And if there's any on the ones I've highlighted, feel free to say. That's go down. Okay, then tall grass, no changes there, get African American, no changes there, Friends of the Great Plains?
I've got a change on Kansas African American Museum.
Okay.
In the second bullet point, we talk about their significant dollars raised to purchase the building. They didn't actually say that in the Q and A. They hinted at it, but didn't give us any details. So that really came out after the committee met as to how they were using those funds.
Well, I asked them something and they said it was for a capital purchase that they couldn't share with, you're right, Joe.
Right, but that could be improving.
I was impressed they could raise that much money.
Right, but that could be for an improvement or change to their current building, not necessarily to purchase the building. It could have been to build the building.
Could we just say we're commending its ability to raise significant dollars for the museum in its program?
For capital, for a capital campaign or something to that effect.
Okay.
Sorry to be, you know.
No, 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 I think that's because that's been a huge issue to them, how many times they either been given land and giving them up money or what have you. But I'm just, I was, I was really excited when I finally figured out where, which building they bought. Anything else on Kansas African American, Cynthia? Anything on Friends and the Great Plains Nature Center? And I think that case is which children is there?
Actually, I did have a comment for the Great Plains.
Okay.
I felt like we should say that the application was significantly better than previous year.
Was it? Did they score better, Joe? I don't know, Jesse. Yeah, Jesse, did they score better since you put that compilation together?
I'll be honest, I don't know off the top of my head if they scored better. I will say that if we add that comment here, it's going to be needed to be added for a large number because that comment was made several times. And since I've been given the direction that this is, we are meant to be looking at this year only and not comparing to previous years, I've left out any, any comment that compared an organization to itself in a previous year.
Is, do the, do the organizations get to read these comments?
I mean, I think everything's subject to a quota request.
What?
Everything's subject to an open records request. I don't know that we send these, I mean, again, I'm just barely three months into the job, so I have no idea. I can go to their house and knock on the door and read them if you'd like.
No, I think they can read them, it's just a matter of whether or not they actually request them.
So, and I agree with Anthony's comment because I will guarantee that there was one that raised questions about last year and they very definitely had seen and they didn't possess, they had certainly seen the comments.
This is Cynthia, to Sam's point though, I think, you know, last year there was a question about whether or not they should even be funded. So I think it is appropriate to applaud them on making good use of the feedback that we provided last year because it was very clear that they didn't do that.
I have to say though, as I recall the conversation, and I was one of the people who applauded their improvement, so don't get me wrong, Beth. As I recall, I, maybe Beth, throw you under the best, I think you pointed out that you had, you still had questions about data that was for the Friends versus the Great Plains Nature Center. So in some respects, it was vastly improved, but I think in others, some committee members still had lingering concern and confusion.
I think the other big thing is gonna be that I don't think their overall score from everybody actually improved very much either. I think it's better, I'm thinking that they were maybe a few points lower last year, but I don't think this is like a huge amount higher than what they scored last year.
I would like to add, from the first draft to the second draft, one comment was removed that my draft had the Friends are paying for staff at the Nature Center, comma, so there was a clear connection to the supported organization.
The other thing to change between this year and last year is they were able to explain why this funding organization, what is, how it's situated within the Great Plains Nature Center itself. And that was fundamental question last year. This year, they made the case a lot better and removed a lot of the questions. To me, that seems like an important thing to turn out on consideration.
Yeah, but again.
So maybe we put in a statement regarding, the committee appreciates the clear delineation between the Friends of the Great Plains Nature Center and the Great Plains Nature Center's roles, I mean, because they did do a good job there.
I guess it's still there as the fourth bullet point.
Why we reduced the funding, and we did last year, we reduced the funding pretty soon. And what did you, but how they explained what they wanted to do, because last year they wanted to do strategic planning.
And Jesse just said that, that the, if you wanna read it out loud, Jesse.
The fourth bullet point is, it's changed, but it is here. The organization's explanation regarding its role and connection to the Great Plains Nature Center and how the funds requested would be used was clear and concise.
So am I thinking of a different organization that we heard that conversation about?
I think so.
Probably the library.
I'm good with this, I'm gonna support Jesse. If our whole purpose is to focus on this year's application. And I think early on in here, we mentioned that we did state that overall applicant, or the applications had improved.
Yes.
I think we need to go through each one individually and say, yes, they did, otherwise we're all, and to Jesse's point, we should only be focusing ideally on the application and not so much last year's applications or merit based aspects. Catch back, Jesse.
Yeah, I agree there. I think we could run into an issue as well. Not only looking at the slight increase in score, but what if we get into next year, we have more applicants, but we have around the same amount of funding? Then they score higher than what they did this year. If we're looking at previous years and they end up getting the same amount or less because we have more applicants, then that's gonna raise questions as well, and I'd rather avoid that.
I agree.
We're already anticipating issues with the large category due to the reinsertion of Orpheum and some other changes across the board, there are gonna be a lot of, we anticipate there will be a number of questions raised. But.
Yeah, I can chime in and join the echo chamber from staff perspective. It's a fresh application and a fresh competitive process every year with a pot of money. So it's really not, not advised to compare and contrast to past applications or even to make projections for future applications, because it's really a year by year, case by case, application process.
So then how do we pass on feedback to our applicants? Should that be an important part of the committee's work?
Well, I think what we've been tasked to do, Sam, and I think that's why years ago this went back and back and back, is that the comments, and my interpretation after doing it three or four iterations was they really wanted feedback specific to the application in why the funding, why the dollar amount, you know, how we wrote it, the dollar amount. And so it was more factual based than anything. Do things continue from one to the next? You're absolutely right. And I think that's a great question as I go forward with the strategic plan. One thing that I think, that I think is a ticking time bomb for this pot of funds is those organizations like Friends of the Great Plains Nature Center, Library Foundation, there's others that I think the Crown Uptown, I don't know if it's Alliance, who changed their name, but anyway, used to be Friends of the Crown Uptown. I think there's more and more for profits that have realized in order to keep positive bottom lining donations, that they've done a Friends type group. And so these questions really don't lend themselves nicely for those types of organizations. So we either need a, in my opinion, a separate pot of money, or we need to change, you know, the criteria of who this is available for, or you change the question so that it's a fair playing field for all.
And I would just, I would offer too to the question, I think there's a difference between us providing helpful feedback to folks and leaving it up to them whether or not they take it, and us using whether or not they took it in consideration of our funding recommendations.
I agree. And I've said it once, I'll say it again, I believe staff helped dramatically that not only us reading through the process with them being more concise applications, but I feel through reading through the applications that staff helped assist the applicants write better narratives as a whole. For the.
I think, I gave a little discussion on this, I just raised the issue that seems to me a purpose of reviewing these applications should include providing feedback to the applicants and not just to the city. But it's very clear that where the committee stands, I don't think it's gonna be more time discussing it and keep this horse fit several times over.
Well, if I could have one, one final thing to this, I think what we're doing here is not necessarily saying this is how you can make a better application for next year. It's more saying this is why we chose to do what we did this year. So if we start saying this is how you can make a better application next year and they come and do those things, what these organizations ultimately want at the end is money. So if we say you did what we asked you to do, but we're gonna give you a little bit less money because more people applied, then we put ourselves in a bigger rut than if we just say this is why we gave you what we gave you this year and that's it.
Well said.
Okay, anything else on Friends of the Great Plains Nature Center? Which is how Children's Theater.
So then just based off Anthony's statement, we just kill that last line that we've highlighted, I think it's good?
I'm sorry?
We just kill that last line that you've highlighted?
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would delete that line.
Great.
Easy.
There goes your word count.
We'll pick it up somewhere else.
Okay, Galway, okay, I have lost my, I lost you.
We are on a rise.
Okay, you're fine. I was just gonna say, does anyone have anything on Grand D'Acqua or Galway Wistock? Okay, how about writing?
I think, again, we killed that last line, better highlight their future endeavors, or we reword that in a way to say
they did not do this.
Yeah.
I would delete it.
I mean, I think it's fair to say that we would have appreciated more detail on that question. Right?
I would have appreciated more detail in the whole application.
Right, and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where we, where we really learned what they were planning on doing was during the Q and A?
I think that would be fair feedback.
Well, look at bullet two.
Yeah.
You could just move that up, for example, numerous collaborations that were not included in the application. And then you could also incorporate, or activities regarding future endeavors.
Yeah, because that is a question we asked.
It is, yeah. And they had a good answer in person, just not on the paper.
I would say instead of Arise is encouraged to provide, maybe Arise missed an opportunity to provide.
Could have, just could have provided.
That's a good, I like that very much.
Which one?
I like the missed opportunity.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, anything additional on Harvester Art?
Well, I have a question on Arise on the third bullet point from the bottom. So the committee would like to see the organization build out their performance metrics. What do we mean when we say build out?
Create?
Yeah, because they really don't have any benchmarks other than attendance.
Okay.
Should we be more specific then?
I would think so.
Provide additional detail about their performance metrics and benchmarks?
I don't know that they have any.
So select?
Or develop.
Describe.
Might be the better word.
Okay.
Have to develop additional performance metrics?
Yeah, I think the issue is expanding the performance and benchmarks to put things beyond just attendance.
Oh, there you go.
Expand, would like to see, and perhaps instead of, because we're on this trend of what did not, how could they improve it, but what would we have liked to have seen? But committee would prefer expanded performance?
The application would have been stronger.
Yeah, I think that's what you were going to say.
With the addition of expanded benchmarks beyond attendance.
Yes.
Maybe make sure there's nothing, they didn't have anything else in there, but I don't believe they did.
Expanded performance metrics beyond attendance. The application would have been stronger with the addition of expanded performance benchmarks, sorry, expanded performance metrics slash benchmarks beyond attendance.
Great.
I'll make sure that as we go on, I'll make sure there's nothing else in that we missed by stating that.
Harvester Art, are we finished with that one? I don't want to grade you on. Harvester Art, anything? Any changes to Regina Klamowski?
Maybe bold type the last two bullet points, but that's just me.
I don't know, I think that's in the helpful hands, but, yeah, who knows? Storytime Village? McCormick School Museum? Okay, anything else we need?
I will just say, if you give me a, you know, a couple more days, I'll go through and make sure that the bullet points better reflect, you know, the application would have been stronger if, rather than the committee would like to see things like that. So that states what happened now rather than what can they do in the future. Because even going, even going through these last couple, I've seen some that needed.
To that point, can I go back to McCormick really quick? The third one, sorry. The third one from the bottom, the second, it says, no collaborations are listed in the application. The committee believes there's a plethora of options for future collaborations, which sounds a bit, oh, sorry, excuse me, a bit preachy, is that what you're trying to say? Maybe just leave it at the first sentence.
I would, I agree completely. I highlighted that on mine. That's kind of subjective on my part.
Yeah, I would say.
Again, it was said, I wrote it down, so just give them a shout.
I'll try to hold it in there next year.
You are a preachy flag.
Surely, this committee doesn't do that.
All I've learned. Yeah, that's cut. No collaboration or listed.
Yep. Lindsay and Jesse, is there anything else you need from us to help make this process easier for you?
Lindsay had to step off, so speaking for her, no, we're doing great. Thank you.
Okay.
That's recorded.
I just want to reiterate, that's a great first step, Jesse, because this is not an easy task, trust me.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Beth, following up on Dominic's question, do you have concerns about what you're taking to the city council?
Well, no, because I'm going to get a little bit of change.
Everyone, I can chime in. I mentioned I have two Zooms at the same time. Thanks for agreeing with me. And kudos to Jesse and the committee for making all this happen. I'm confident in communicating the committee's wishes to city council. I'm sure I'll send out a draft of our agenda review report to Admin and Beth for review before it goes to our cabinet. We have an internal, like, city cabinet that oversees the agenda reports before the city council oversees them. And then this document will serve as backup. So I'm confident, based on the luxurious amount of discussion and thoughtfulness that the committee has put into this, that we'll be able to communicate it efficiently and effectively to city council. What they choose to do with it, I can't predict, but I feel confident. And I'll make sure to keep everyone posted on when that, when that agenda moves forward. So if you're able to attend, you're more than welcome to.
And my experience in the past has been usually the city staff who was presenting it gets the questions. It's only, I've been there in case, in the past, I've been there in case there was something came up, but I've never been called upon. So I think staff will do fine.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, go forth and do well.